Yeah, testing one, two, three.
Hello?
Check, check, check.
Can members of the public hear us?
Loud and clear.
Like thumbs up out there?
Okay.
You can.
That's right. Uh, Brother Doug, I can see you reclining. You might want to go off camera. We got the McCullas showing up in all their glory, making a statement. There you go. Oh. Good, at least they're clothed.
Yes.
Is that sometimes an issue?
We have an outdoor shower at, um.
I'm not, I was. That was 100% rhetorical.
Oh, my.
Be careful what you wish for. Okay, let me know when I can call the meeting to order. Please put us out of our misery. All right, thank you. I would like to call the meeting, the Village Board, to order at 7:34 PM. All trustees are present and accounted for. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to thank everyone. Um, welcome everyone to the meeting and thank you all for your time, talent, and patience in advance as we conduct business this evening. Um, our fourth item of, um, on the agenda is Special Order of Business. We have three items this evening. For A, Oath of Office. Um, and at this time Clerk Harold will, um, allow us to take the oath of office, uh, with myself and the two new trustees.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Jim R. Gordon.
George.
Having been elected
Backwards.
To the office of village trustee in the village of Shorewood. Swear that I will support the Constitution
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States, Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Toya, do you just want to speak?
I'm so sorry.
Hey, can you turn?
Oh, you can also.
Please raise your right hand. I, Matt McGovern.
I, Matt.
Having been elected
Having been elected.
to the office of village trustee
Office.
in the village of Shorewood. Swear that I will support
Swear that I will.
the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Best of mine.
So help me God. Anne McCaggy. Please raise your right hand. I am McCaggy. Having been elected to the office of village president in the village of Shorewood. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you very much. We are now, um, going to move to item four B, a proclamation for Trustee Moore Baldoff for her service on the village board. Um, and I would like to ask Trustee Kudo to read that.
I would be happy to. Okay, here we, here we go. Whereas Melissa Moore Baldoff accepted the call to public surface, service when she was elected as a village trustee of the village of Shorewood on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, and whereas Melissa Moore Baldoff during her three-year tenure served in that capacity in a different diligent manner exemplifying and maintaining the high standards of public service, which the residents of Shorewood have come to expect and enjoy. And whereas in her leadership role as Chair of several standing committees, Melissa Moore Baldoff, in addition to addressing issues that affect the community, made a sincere and thoughtful effort to resolve concerns affecting individual constituents. And whereas the village board of the village of Shorewood deems it most appropriate and fitting to publicly acknowledge the many contributions of Melissa Moore Baldoff to the village of Shorewood. Now, therefore, I, Anne McCullough McCaggy, village president of the village of Shorewood, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, do hereby express the appreciation of the residents of Shorewood to Melissa Moore Baldoff and present this proclamation honoring Melissa Moore Baldoff for outstanding selfless service to the village of Shorewood, dated in the village of Shorewood, Wisconsin, this sixth day of May, 2024.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, to have my colleagues recognize me in that way and to have, uh, colleagues and constituents, uh, you know, appreciate the service. It was truly an honor to be able to serve the community in that capacity as a trustee. And while I'm no longer on the board, I am really excited, uh, to see all these wonderful people who are on the board, who I know are going to continue to do amazing work for this community and continue to move the ball forward on so many important projects that are, you know, happening right now. I know you guys have your work cut out for you. I fully intend to be a partner if there's ever anything I can do to be supportive of your work. I am a phone call away. Uh, you know, I'd be happy to serve in different capacities if I'm ever, you know, if there's ever an opening on committees or other opportunities, please let me know. I'm here to still be of service and, uh, we'll be keeping an eye on what's happening in the village and, you know, keeping an eye out for my, uh, village manager's memo still every week and keeping, uh, up to date with what's happening. So I, like I said, really it was such an honor to serve with everybody on the board and with President McCaggy and with Rekka and Toya. Like, we've got such an incredible team here in the village and, uh, you guys are the best and I'm excited to see what this board is gonna do. So good luck and I'll see you guys soon.
That's great. All right, thanks. Well, I just want to say, I just want to say that, um, you really, I really appreciate the way that you championed and advocated for creative collaborations across levels of government. We've come a long way. And I think we are a leader, um, in the county at this point for taking advantage of different opportunities, um, that bring resources to us that wouldn't be otherwise available, um, and diversifying our revenue streams, um, and also always making sure that we remember to take resident input, um, and putting that first. And so I really appreciate that and I will miss it, but I will try to, my best to take it forward.
Good. Well, and I hope somebody else will always ask the question, are there federal dollars that can? So, you know, I, and I think that somebody will, but hopefully somebody else will ask that question since I won't be here to ask it.
You can always text, uh, Trustee Kudo. I think you have his number.
Are, are there federal dollars for this? Yes.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm just going back. I believe the next item is four C, um, a proclamation. I have to get back into my computer. A proclamation for, um, law enforcement Memorial Week. Okay, here it is. And before, so I want to recognize, um, the members of our police department who are here this evening, including Chief Worth. Um, thank you for joining us this evening. I, we have been making this proclamation since, um, Chief Worth joined us in 2022. Yeah. Awesome. And I appreciate her, um, bringing this to our attention so that we can make it part of our annual, um, procedures to begin. Um, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all the members of law enforcement who have made the ultimate sacrifice of their lives, um, in the past year. Thank you. Um, and to those who are with us this evening, we, um, pray for your safety at all times and appreciate your service moving forward. And I know that's a different week. That's a police recognition or law enforcement recognition day or something like that. But anyway, um, at this time, I'd like to make the following proclamation. To recognize National Law Enforcement Memorial Week 2024. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. Whereas established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Law Enforcement Week pays special recognition to those officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas the names of 282 dedicated public servants who have paid the ultimate sacrifice will be engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial for the calendar year of 2024. Whereas the village of Shorewood recognizes the risk and sacrifice required to perform, perform public safety duties 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Whereas the village of Shorewood appreciates that the members of the Shorewood Police Department use the greatest level of care and caution during each call for service in order to protect the safety of every member of the community. Whereas the village of Shorewood values that the Shorewood Police Department has willingly collaborated in what is recognized as an ongoing process to communicate with community stakeholders about the role of law enforcement in the village's desire to serve residents, visitors, and employees in an equitable manner. Whereas the village of Shorewood encourages the community to join the members of Shorewood Police Department in this solemn week of national honor by expressing thanks in writing and in person. Whereas in 2024, the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week formally runs from May 12th to May 18th, 2024. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 34th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2023. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the village of Shorewood will observe May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week in the village of Shorewood and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, dated at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this sixth day of May, 2024. Thank you. Would you like to say anything or address the board? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Try not to, I'll try to do it without getting emotional. Next week is a very emotional week for me and for all law enforcement officers across the country. Um, as President McCaggy said, 282 officers' names will be engraved on the mall, National Mall. Or I'm sorry, the, the law enforcement memorial wall in DC, including one of my former officers, Peter Irving, from the Milwaukee Police Department, District Number Four. Last night, there was a Milwaukee police officer shot. Thankfully, non-fatally, but it just showcases the dangers that our officers face every single day. And the recognition of this law enforcement memorial week is so incredibly important to us. The, the officers that are here who put their lives on the line every single day to serve this village. I appreciate, uh, your appreciation and your thanks and, uh, recognizing them for the work that they do, for the care that they give to all of our residents, visitors, and employees. So thank you for taking this time, uh, to read the proclamation, President McCaggy, and for everybody to recognize this. And congratulations to Trustee McGovern, Trustee Ursink, and President McCaggy, uh, for your reelections. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I know my officers do as well. Thank you.
If there are any other officers who would like to speak this evening, you're welcome to, but no pressure. No, I, I, you're quiet types. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, at this time, that concludes our special orders, special orders of business this evening. Um, we have a special guest, um, joining us this evening who I'd like to recognize at this time. Um, our new county supervisor, Anne O'Connor, um, who's actually a resident of Whitefish Bay and the co-founder of Bay Bridge. So, uh, Supervisor O'Connor, if you would like to address the board, you can come up to the microphone if you, if you like. And we're excited to work with you.
Thank you, President McCaggy. I'm super excited to work with you. And so as you mentioned, I am the new District One Supervisor that is, uh, representing River Hills, most of Glendale, Shorewood, Whitefish Bay, Fox Point, and Bayside. So, uh, the majority of the North Shore. I think I was sworn in about three weeks ago. Um, and in my advocacy work, I may have intersected with some of you already. Um, working on environmental justice, social justice, which will also be, um, pillars of what I'm working on at the county level. Um, so I'm interested in hearing, um, from all of you. I'll leave my cards, um, at the entry table, but I'm super excited to, um, represent District One and, uh, work together to make Milwaukee County the best and healthiest and most equitable place it can be. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Oh, so there are four motions. So, uh, motion by Ursink, seconded by Lynn. Um, any discussion? Yes.
Item five A is in Apple.
Okay. Um, I'd like to pull five A. Any other items? All right, hearing none. Um, is there, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of five A, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That is item five A, Presentation of Accounts, May 6th, 2024. Trustee Stokebrand.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that we have made our, apparently our first payment, uh, to Lauterback and Amen. Amen? Uh, for the, uh, March. We have a new finance director and, um, this is, uh, apparently our first payment, but I'm, Rebecca's agreed to look back. We were apparently missing two weeks of February we got for free, maybe, or?
No. So thank you for bringing.
I want to pay our bills, you know, it's our new finance director. We want to make sure we pay them.
You're gonna see that invoice come through, um, at our next meeting.
Okay, go for the, the weeks. Okay, all right, thank you. And with that, I move to approve the financial.
All right, motion by Trustee Stokebrand to approve the accounts as presented, seconded by Trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have no public hearings this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone here in person or on Zoom who would like to be heard this evening? All right, seeing none. Oh, oh, yes. If so, please come to the microphone and say your name and address and please to speak loudly because we have to capture it.
So my name is Liz Dunzing. I live at.
Little, it's got an echo.
Liz Dunzing. I live at 3544 North Prospect. And I understand there's an item regarding, um, uh, the four-way stop at our intersection.
Oh, so yeah, that's on the agenda this evening. And so you can comment at that time. Are you able to stay?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you. It'll be easier for us to catch the comments if, if you speak at that time. All right, moving on to new business, um, nine A, Consider Ordinance 3062, An Ordinance Pursuant to Section 64(c)(4) of 2023 Wisconsin Act 73 to opt out of extended closing hours for licensed alcohol premises during the Republican National Convention. Um, this is a matter that we, um, discussed and approved, um, and we gave direction to, um, draft this ordinance and now it is coming to, before us um, to be approved. Is there anything that, um, you would like to add? Okay, um, anything from the perspective of the, of the attorney?
No, it's just, it's a weird situation because I have to tell. So you guys understand opting out.
Yes. Yeah, we had a great, we had a very thorough discussion and, um, consideration at a previous meeting, so. Uh, Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, just wanted to just mention that I had spoken to the bid director, Janet Henning, who spoke to many of the local sort of establishments. And they all said regardless, they probably would not be staying open for that time anyways. Um, they didn't have the staffing. So I think, you know, after speaking to the bars and, and the restaurants, um, and their unwillingness to want to be open, it made it sort of an easier decision for, for myself, I think, for.
Yeah, and in.
Conversations.
In addition, we had a number of neighbors who were very concerned about the, um, prospect of this and it just seems like it's not worth the stress of wondering what's gonna happen during that time. So I'm pleased that we're taking this. I'm pleased to support this action this, this evening. Is there a motion? Trustee Kudo?
I'm happy to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 3062, An Ordinance Pursuant to Section 64 dash c4 of 2023 Wisconsin Act 73 to opt out of extended closing hours for licensed alcohol premises during the RNC.
All right, motion by Trustee Kudo, seconded by Trustee Stokebrand. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
President McCaggy?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to the second item of new business, nine B, Consider Ordinance 3063, An Ordinance Establishing a Four Way Stop Sign at the Intersection of East Stratford Court and North Prospect Avenue Reports of, oh, that's not. Period. Um, this comes with a recommendation to approve from the Public Works Committee, correct? Um, Trustee Ursink, if you want to give us a summary of that discussion and action?
It was a fantastic conversation. We had a number of residents from Stratford, uh, come in and, and speak about this particular intersection. And I think, you know, in the past, we've really sort of focused on the direction from DPW. Uh, and I think that, you know, the DPW has not seen or the need for traffic signs at this particular location, but I think after speaking to residents and seeing what they've kind of been through for the past, you know, two, three years with all the construction, everything that's happening in that neighborhood. Um, and there, there are currently temporary stop signs there. We felt that this would be a good addition to that, to that area and that neighborhood, these stop signs. And, um, you know, so, so I think that's why we recommended moving forward with, with the, uh, adding the stop signs in this, in this intersection.
Thank you. Miss, uh, was it Dunzing? Dunzing, would you like to speak at this time?
I'll just, um, say thank you because if, um, it, you know, the DPW is in agreement that, um, I think is what the neighborhood and the neighbors that live within a block of that would very much appreciate. Um, and I'll just underscore it with an incident that happened a week and a half ago that really shook my husband. Um, and I'll probably get emotional about it, but there was, um, a car, there's a stop sign there. It's a two-way stop and a two-way yield, but there's a stop at Stratford and a car, husband was sitting outside with our dog. And, um, three relatively new kids in the neighborhood, young, darted out of our alleyway very quickly into the middle of Prospect, crossing the alley to the other side, and a car came to a screeching halt within inches of hitting two of the three kids. And my thought was, holy cow, had there not been that stop sign at Stratford, that car could have been going just a few miles faster and unable to stop or less attentive by the fact that they were forced to stop and then start again. And so, um, so thank you. It just isn't, um, very much appreciated. And, um, I've lived there for almost 20 years and I know that it is a, an intersection, one of the few intersections where there has been a fatality in this, um, village. And so, so thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for coming this evening. Um, any other, are there questions from the trustees or motion? Yes, Trustee Stokebrand.
So I was at the intersection today. So there are two temporary stops on Prospect and two yields Stratford. And so is that's what we're approving is making that signage permanent? Two yields and two stop.
I thought it was.
No, wait. What we, we, we talked about was basically there was that option, um, where we could have thought, all right, maybe just Prospect would be stop signs and we would just, you know, kind of ignore Stratford. But I think given the uniqueness of this intersection, um, and just the way that in, in particular, a lot of cars loop around those blocks.
You mean people looking for parking?
Looking for parking. And so there's, there's like a really concentrated amount of traffic in that intersection. So we just kind of thought it'd be best to, the, the yield signs where they are, their location will stay the same. We'll just replace the yield with the stop. And then where those temporary stop signs are, we'll just plug them in the ground. And just have it, you know, be a four-way stop and that's it.
I guess my thinking is we've heard from traffic engineers that the more stop signs you have, the less people are likely to stop at them because it's tends to be an overload. And so that's my only question here. The other question I have is how much is this is related to Downer? I mean, I would think there'd be so much traffic that would be on Downer that is now on these other side streets. Did you discuss that? How much of it could be?
I mean, we discussed it and, uh, we really deferred to the residents in that neighborhood. We felt that this, um, after hearing from a large group of them that this was warranted and, um, we felt the, the need to move forward with this.
Yeah, it was, it was really, I mean, primarily long time residents. I mean, really a lot of years at that intersection, um, with really the same concern the entire time. The, the main takeaway that I got for the residents was there's an increase in trucks. But that's to be expected due to the construction. The, the main thing really is people, people just, you know, they, they can't get a parking spot. They whip around the corner and they just, nobody looks, nobody stops, and they just whip back over to, um, the street or they just blast through trying to get back to Edgewood. So it just seems like I was in favor of four-way, you know, after the meeting, so.
Trustee Kudo?
I move approval of ordinance 3063, An Ordinance Establishing a Four Way Stop Sign at the Intersection of East Stratford Court and North Prospect Avenue.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion by, uh, Trustee Kudo with a second by Trustee Ursink. Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question I had, um, was there any, did DPW raise any concerns about traffic flow or anything along those lines?
No concerns were raised at the time.
Okay.
I think, uh, one comment that I will make, um, Mr. Pendleton was here from, uh, Parks and Open Spaces, uh, or Bike and Pedestrian Safety, and, and he really sort of emphasized the need for maybe a holistic sort of thought about how traffic works and, and maybe to get away from stop signs in the future and think about different sort of elements that we could be working towards putting in the community that, that would lead to more safety measures than just putting stop signs everywhere. But, you know, that's a long sort of long-term sort of commitment, a long-term sort of thinking. But I think we were all sort of interested in where could that go? But, um, for now, the stop signs made the most sense.
I would just want to add as well, um, I heard that over and over again when I was out doing doors on my campaign, just everybody has a story about their block or something that they want at their corner and, um, you know, I'm certainly going to vote for this, um, appreciate the residents coming forward and requesting it, um, but and I know we've got some opportunities coming up to do some kind of bigger picture, longer-term plans, and I look forward to working on things that can go beyond stop signs that a number of people unfortunately ignore anyway. So, um, but I just want to thank you. I, I did hear about that story, uh, when I was canvassing and I lived on Stratford Court for about two years and people in the neighborhood told me about that as well. Just, you know, keep an eye out on your kids. It's been a fatality here and just watch out.
Assistant Director, Public Works, is there anything you'd like to say at this time? All right, thank you. All right, with that, that'll be a roll call vote.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. That concludes new business for this evening. We now move on to reports of village officials. With village president being first, we have a proclamation of Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our residents enjoy, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or members of the field crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, and whereas we all are stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the residents of the Village of Shorewood are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution practice, water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I and McCullough McCaig, present, president of the Village of Shorewood, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as Drinking Water Week in the Village of Shorewood, and I call upon all residents to join the American Water Works Association in celebration of Drinking Water Week as we recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. Dated Shorewood, Wisconsin, the sixth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. I have no other report at this time. Reports of trustees, including committees that met, that met earlier this evening with a recommendation or liaisons of citizen committees.
I have an update from the library. We have a new library director.
Right, yay, congratulations.
Haley was offered the position and took it, very excited. It was a, it was a long process, would like to thank the friends in Shorewood Public Library for their involvement. They were part of not only the interview process, but all the discussions up to the actual hiring. They were fantastic partners. We are all very excited about Haley moving up from interim director to the direct, re-director at the Shorewood Library. I see that she has already scooped a DPW employee, so, sorry, but I heard the employee is fantastic, so glad to keep her in the village as well. No, we're, we're really excited. The library has a ton of stuff going on right now. We are getting very close to full staffing at the library in a very quick turnaround from where we were at the beginning of the year. All of those hires were done by Haley, so all, all sort of compliments and whatnot to her. Just very excited to move on to the next stage of the Shorewood Public Library.
And thank you for agreeing to serve again.
Sure.
All right, strategic initiatives?
Yeah, I can report that we, we discussed the issue of hiring contractors to do the lead service line replacement and the water main replacement using the, the community public-private partnerships model, which is a little bit different model than a typical bidding contract, and this is where a private entity can seek out grant funding and work from the federal government or state government and work with a local government to do infrastructure upgrades. And they put in, and negotiate with us to include performance-based standards, so we have a lot of input into how the projects are done, and we don't have to pay until the projects are done right. And then we made a recommendation that the board sign a, sign a deal with the community, community infrastructure partners, which is in working up in Watertown to to do these same type of projects here, so you'll be hearing more about that.
Thank you. Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, so I just wanted to just thank the DPW for, for helping, you know, Shorewood Little League, the season just started for us, and they're always such a great help, coming out, helping us mow the field, getting the, the sort of concession stand facilities organized, and it's, it's just, they go above and beyond on, on really helping that whole thing kind of come together, and we really appreciate all of their hard work and energy to make, make that happen. Not only that, the farmer's market, Shorewood Farmer's Market is almost a month away, it's hard to believe, but we are a month away from the, the farmer's market, and there's a rumor, rumor that the Donut, Donut Monster will be back at the market, so they weren't there last year, they're going to come back this year, I think a lot of people are going to be very happy in Shorewood.
Right, thank you. Trustee Lynn, summary from JP and L that we should be aware of?
I mean, nothing, nothing we need to be aware of at this point, just a lot of reappointments and
They'll be coming forward, yeah. All right. Trustee Stokebrand, any updates, the reports? Arndorfer, Kudo? Oh, Kudo already went. All right.
I'm out of committees.
Yep.
We have a new donation policy that's coming to.
All right, we'll look forward to seeing.
It's very exciting.
Excellent, a long time in coming, too, so. Manager, village manager report?
Just two things. First, wearing pink today in honor of Municipal Clerks Week. It is our deputy clerk's favorite color. Tomorrow is purple, which is our clerk's favorite color, and Wednesday is blue, which is our elections and licensing clerk's favorite color. So if you're inclined to dress in color, come on, come on in, say hi, and thank everyone down on that first floor for the things that they do. Second, wanted to update you that we're working with LNA to recalibrate the schedule for the Long Range Financial Plan, uh, schedule. So for right now, we're benchmarking to talk with the board on June, or the Budget and Finance Committee and the board on June third, to really go through what we do in our first meeting, which is reviewing the, the project timelines and project descriptions. We have tentatively scheduled in June seventeenth to meet with the board to have City Water walk through the Water Utility Finance Plan that they have put together, that framework, pending that they are available that date. Currently, right now, the principal who we're working with is on vacation, so we'll look forward for him to come back and verify. And then, once those two meetings have concluded, then they're going to recalibrate data and bring back the final version on August third. So that's the tentative plan for right now, subject to City Water and them preparing information when they get back and them agreeing to the timeline as well. So, never fear, I will provide these dates this Friday in my Friday update, and then if something changes, I'm going to be providing you with updates under my village manager's report, either at our regular board meeting or on a weekly basis. But last week had a really great week submitting the Public Service Commission Annual Report. Anyone who opened that seventy-six-page document that I attached, thank you. But there's a lot of internal work that we all went through with that, really vetting some of those numbers to make sure that we are as limber as possible as we start to develop a solid foundation here for our community to work through lead service line replacements, so.
Excellent, any questions?
I had a question about something in proclamation before.
Yes.
I'm wondering if, if you could just clarify, so in the proclamation for the police memorial, you had said there's a candlelight vigil in, on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Ooh, I think it was a miss.
I assume that's two thousand twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Okay, is that something we're doing locally, or is that?
I think it's downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes.
Melissa mentioned earlier, she wanted to see people ask, is there federal, federal money for that? And I know she was kind of joking, but I just want to state publicly, I'm going to do that, so.
You got it covered?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I will try to bring that to every meeting I can.
Okay, thanks. All right, so with that, I believe we have future items of consideration. Any future items of consideration? All right, hearing none, now we have a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Excuse me? Oh.
No, we have to read the entire.
Oh, it's right at the bottom.
It's just that little thing.
So.
We just have to, just that now, as opposed to all of the?
No, it goes on to. So you would move to it.
Oh, okay, it's just much shorter than.
It does look shorter.
Yeah. The one, the ones are extended.
They were.
And I'm happy to, no, I'm making the short motion. I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to nineteen eight-five-one G to confer with legal counsel on strategies, strategies regarding pending litigation on various legal matters involving East Capital Neighborhood Association versus the Village of Shorewood.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote. Oh, I had Ursink, Ursink.
Oh, I'm not doing.
You're ready.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
So for a closed session, if you could just give me a moment, I'm going to create a breakout room so we can move the, our attorney over.
Flip to closed.
Yes, yes.
It's Sam Gordon.
It's a Sam Brown.